Thank you, Councilmember Crosby.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Lau. Mayor Pro Tem Cash Vigita. Mayor Hepburn.
Here and by.
All present, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There will be two items. First one is conference with the Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Negotiator, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and City Attorney. Lawyer Organizations, Laverne City Employees Association, Laverne Firefighters Association, Laverne Police Middle Management Association, Laverne Police Officers Association, Laverne Fire Man, Middle Management Association, and all unrepresented employees. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, Subsection D1. Gonzalez versus City of Laverne, Los Angeles Superior Court, Case Number 24STCB34625. And do not believe there will be any reporting out.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any comments before we go to public comment on this item? I'm going to open up public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing now, I closed public comment. As that, thank you. At this time, we'll recess at 5:31 PM and reconvene at 6:30 PM for a regular city council meeting. Thank you all. Good evening, everybody. We're going to start in about two seconds here. Honored welcome everybody tonight at our city council meeting. We're going to call this meeting to order at 6:38 PM. Good evening. Welcome again to the city, tonight's city council meeting. I want to remind everyone that per the city's rules of decorum, we're actually reconvening into a city council meeting. We had a closed session. Do we, before we start, do we have anything to report on our closed session?
There's nothing to report out, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Again, I want to remind everybody that the city's rules for decorum, all speakers, members of the audience, and council members are to conduct themselves with decorum and not to engage in conduct that interrupts the orderly conduct of the city council meeting. Also, public comment through Zoom may be accepted for the agenda items listed within the consent calendar, public hearing and discussion calendar sections of the agenda. General public comments will be accepted at the meeting by those physically in attendance at the appropriate time. Tonight, we are very pleased to have Army veteran Juan Rodriguez to conduct the pledge allegiance. Mr. Rodriguez, please come forward, sir.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could stay there, sir. For sir.
Look great. Look great. Great. Thank you.
FC.
Yes.
All the way. They took it up.
Got the E. Got the E.
Oh, yeah. That's one.
Yeah, that was worth it.
That's all I, I didn't care for the money.
Car, car. Last night.
Okay.
Right.
Back to me.
Yes.
February nineteen fifty-one. March. And. Read it again. When. There. I'm. They were. Having. Come on. On. Sorry. Giving Laverne all my life. F right now. Move through the border line. Grab. In. This time. And. Thirty-one. Heaven. Company. Argers. Like the heat. Rifle. Captain. Lost. Big party.
Statue of Independence, Doma. We can talk about it.
Company, company commander, you know, body.
Yeah.
We later on.
Yeah.
Let me cook. Over there. What do you guys want to do? Rain until. Little, yeah. No, I want fifteen guys. Let's go. He was ordered later. Back later. Company. Cadre. Hi.
What's it all about?
All the.
Got them all.
All the side went.
What happened?
I'm laughing. I laugh all but every time I remember, I laugh. Laugh at the fire and stole from us.
What'd you do in the army? What's your MOA?
Rifleman.
Rifleman.
All the way. Right. Easy company forty. Second book standing.
City of Laverne. Honored. Take it and on the counter. Counsel. I have a first class one. Your gratitude.
I don't. Don't look.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Again, thank you for your service. Mr. Domer, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Crosby.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Lau.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Cash Vigita.
Here.
Mayor Hepburn.
Here.
All present, sir.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, we have one presentation, Community Risk Reduction Specialist Lonnie Shipman will be providing a brief overview on the current status of our local hazard mitigation plan. Mr. Shipman, please come on up. Honey, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, yeah, I'm here to discuss briefly, give you a brief update on the current status of our local hazard mitigation plan. And more importantly, at this stage in the, in the process, just really try to encourage members of our community to participate in our survey. So. As you are aware, we have embarked upon updating our local hazard mitigation plan. And our local hazard mitigation plan is really a very important tool for this city to identify and assess risks from natural and man-made hazards and outline, outline long-term sustainable strategies for reducing or eliminating the impacts of those hazards. And we, we've, we've been fortunate and successful in securing a grant to assist us with updating this plan. They're not cheap. We have a consultant, a consulting firm that we have hired, Black and Beach. And this process goes through not only Cal OES approval, but then FEMA approval, and this consultant is assisting us in getting this plan across the finish line. So, we're in the very early infancy stages, you know, just really trying to identify what these risks are and really try to determine, you know, what are the, what are the items that we want to focus on for this plan and what's important to Laverne. So, we do have a, a grant that is covered, it covers up to seventy-five percent of the total cost of this particular project to be completed. So that's actually something we're very happy and proud of. So the local hazard mitigation plan is important for a number of reasons. Obviously, just kind of stated briefly what those, what those are about identifying and assessing these risks. But this particular slide talks a little bit about, you know, we do have a plan that is actually expired. So we are, one of the things that's critical for having this plan is that it gives us an opportunity to apply for, for grants. And without having an updated plan, we cannot do that. So, our plan's expired. We're in the process of obviously getting that back up to, to being current, and then we can actually go ahead and, and chase down funds that could be utilized for a number of things specifically related to local hazard mitigation. It does help reduce, again, natural hazards, impacts on people, property, infrastructure, services. It covers a wide range of things, wildfire, earthquakes, drought, floods, you name it. So we certainly want to make sure that we are trying to cover everything that, again, that is critical and important to our, our community here in Laverne. As I mentioned, it establishes an opportunity for grant funding. And it definitely does take an entire city. We've got two different teams that are working on this project. We have a core planning team, which is made up of individuals from all the different departments in the city. And then we have a steering committee, which is made up from community members that, we have ULV represented, we have the airport represented, we have Hillcrest represented, we have the school district represented. I'm probably forgetting quite a few others. Pomona Valley Medical Health, we have them, they're represented. So we really reached out. We have our, our mobile home parks represented. So it's important that we try to get a good swath of the community in this particular update. So where we are at in the process, there's essentially six phases, and we're at phase number three, which is our public engagement strategy. So we're still, we're not necessarily past phase one and phase two. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done as we are moving through this process, but phase three is our public engagement. And so this is where tonight's update comes into play, and this is where I'm here to ask you guys for your assistance and help. We have a survey currently that is live. We were able to actually get it live about two weeks ago, and we presented it out at the National Night Out event, and that, that photo up there is our consultant who flew into town to assist with getting the survey out. We collected forty-nine surveys that evening. And then we actually have it live, not only on the City of Laverne webpage, but also on the Laverne Fire, excuse me, the Laverne Facebook and Laverne Instagram page as well. There's a link there that you can access the, the survey. I did also bring surveys, old school paper. So I will leave them on the table over here, and if anybody would like to grab some, please, if you could fill them out, if you want to leave them here or take them with you, and then you can return them back to City Hall. That would be fantastic. But we, this survey is about thirteen questions, and we're looking to collect as much information as possible based on those that live here, those that work here, those that shop here. Just really getting the feedback of what are your concerns, and are we addressing those concerns as best as possible? And, and the, the other questions, they are geared towards just determining your preparedness level. You know, have you taken any preparedness classes, or have you thought about this? And it's, it's by no means to do anything but to help us get an understanding and know where we have to meet the community when we develop this plan and get this plan rolled out. So there, there is a lot of opportunity in collecting a lot of really good raw data from this that will help us. Even as, for example, we have a question there that says if you're interested in, in learning more about a community emergency response team, we offer two trainings a year for emergency preparedness free of charge to residents, and even folks that are not residents that work here or visit. We open it up to them as well. So we're collecting information and reaching out to those individuals that share that, that interest as well. So with that said, we have, again, we have a few different ways that we are promoting the survey, again, on our website. The city, the city's website, you can click directly on the link and it'll take you right to the survey. You fill it out. We've also been periodically sending out Instagram and Facebook posts that I know the city has shared as well on their platform that has a QR code that'll also take anybody directly to the survey. And it is very quick and easy to fill out on your phone, on a laptop, or again, like I said, if you prefer paper, I've got some and I'll leave some here. And we're going to accept surveys throughout the duration of this particular process. There's no deadline, per se. This process could take us another six or eight months possibly. Again, as I said, it's got to go through Cal OES approval and then through FEMA approval. So it may take a bit of time, but we are, we, we want the feedback. We're looking for it and, and we encourage everybody to, to take the survey, and we would love your support in helping us get the word out. So with that, any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I think I just want to make sure that, give us some updates on numbers as we go along, because we can all push it out also, but you've got it pretty much as simple as you could possibly have it, which is the QR code, scan that, but let us know how we can help. I know the website. Where are we at right now? You know, the forty-nine for the night of the National Night Out. Have you seen? What's, what's, what do we have right now on the social media platform that's been coming in?
We just recently got a report from the consultant. We are up to a hundred and four surveys total, so I think we received probably fifty-five or so online.
So we can do better.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we need to really push that out, and you're doing your Instagram, social media, and all that good stuff?
Yep, absolutely. So, yeah, whatever. And if you guys have any ideas.
Well, let us know what we can do. I know we did the minute with the mayor, with all of us there at National Night Out. I think it's important that we get that out on the social media platforms, just push it out. Simple thing to fill out. It's really important.
Absolutely.
Extremely important. Everybody sitting in here right now, please scan the QR code and do it right now, please.
Yep, and again, I'll leave.
We're going to give you three minutes.
I'm just curious where we are with the Firewise program?
Sure. So we actually successfully just found out about two weeks ago that one of our communities in town was able to get their Firewise designation, so we're very pleased. We'll be back here, I think it's September fifteenth. We're going to bring the, the group up, and matter of fact, I think that day is also, we're going to do a proclamation for Emergency Preparedness Month, which will be perfect because we'll kind of have both, but we do have, again, our first Firewise community, so we're very pleased with that. They worked extremely hard. Mr. Raymond Swain and his team really just were persistent by getting that across the finish line. And so I actually had a phone call today from another resident who lives closer to Heritage Park, and she had some interest, and I let her know it's possible. I mean, I know the, the thing that we run into a lot when I start talking about Firewise, if not putting somebody to sleep, is that they realize there's a lot of effort on their part to have to, to have to get this, this process through. And, but I tell them, we are, we're there to assist every step of the way, and not only that, when, when an interested group applies, there's a portal that they have to create, they have to create and fill out application, and they create their own, like username, if you will, and that's how they create their, their community. There is a regional coordinator from Cal Fire that actually is assigned to that individual, and then I work with that regional coordinator to try to address everything that we need to help get that group across the finish line with their application. So this individual, and I think he might, at some point, maybe he might have an interest to come in and, and talk about Firewise as well, which is great. He's a fantastic resource for us to have. And so, yeah, we, we are, we are working hard. We sent out, obviously, some social media about our Rustic Canyon Firewise group that just received their designation. Live Oak Canyon is a, is a group that is kind of unincorporated on the border of Laverne, so I had a conversation with, they're a very engaged community. I had a conversation with one of their members today, setting up a time to come out and meet with them, which will probably be first or second week in September. So we've got a few other individuals, and we certainly are still continuing to push it. We have, you know, we, we're, if they're ready, we're ready, you know, so.
Well, as the state's mandating the defensible space in our homes and stuff, but not only that, for insurance reasons.
Absolutely.
It helps a lot, and especially with the cancellations, and it doesn't have to be North Laverne. It's all over Laverne. It doesn't matter anymore. They'll cancel you just because, you know, and it's really sad. So being a Firewise community is a really good way to hedge that.
Absolutely.
At least say, hey, we've done it. So you need to make sure insurance companies knows what's going on. So the more information we get on that, too, would be great.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to now move on to announcements of upcoming community events. I do have a couple cards here. I do want to make sure that everybody knows that school has started today, the first day of school, so I think it's extremely important that we all be very careful. We slow down and watch the new families bringing their kids, dropping them off, and doing things they probably shouldn't be, double stacking cars and doing all that wonderful stuff. I know our police department's been involved with that, making sure that people are being careful around all the schools, but it is chaos for the first week, between the high schools, the grade schools, and the middle schools. It is crazy. So if you can go around and go through San Dimas Canyon and go around there, or go Arrow Highway even with the trains and the arms and everything else that's going on, just be careful. And that's another thing, they are still doing their pre-revenue testing on the trains. We had some issues, and I would appreciate it. If anybody sees an issue, we gave you an eight-hundred number to call, and they were working on the signals. We had some signalization problems at a couple of the main areas being white, King Wheeler, the San Dimas Canyon, and they were out making adjustments. So if there's an issue, we'll push that out. Can we push that number out again on our, on our page? It's an eight-hundred number, and it's basically, we have nothing to do with it. It's the county and it's metro, and there's a gentleman that was, he did receive that when I did the minute with the mayor, and I told you about it. He was very happy to. Anybody that has an issue, call him and let him know that there's a problem with something going on with the crossarms or the trains or, or the signalization. So with that.
Local announcements?
Yes, you have one. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. It was interesting, a couple of days ago, we had some of the men's soccer players from the University of Laverne knocking door to door, handing out their schedule. August twentieth at eight PM is their first game. You are available. They'd love to see you. The game.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And have another announcement?
Yes. If, for any of you that are looking to clean out your closets and do a good deed, the Bonita High School Choir is hosting a clothing drive this Saturday from nine to eleven at the high school. So if you have items that you would like to drop off, they are accepting clothes, shoes, handbags, towel sheets, blankets, bed linens, et cetera. So please make a, you know, make a, a donation if you're able, if you're just looking to marry condo your house. And then ULV Football and Women's Soccer are currently hosting fundraisers. So if you are interested, I would urge you to go find their Instagrams. They are Linktree's. They are looking for funds to help them have a great season.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Mayor Pro Tem Cash, any announcements?
Yes, thank you. Just really appreciate all those that attended the great event that we had at Damian High School to support the Damian Band, getting out there to the Macy's Day Parade. They're still looking for donations, so if you can, continue to support them. I really appreciate that help in our community to get there and represent the City of Laverne and their high school over there in New York. So that's all, thank you.
How'd they do?
They did really well. There was many cars. We, myself and my, my colleagues were there, and we did a little video. We even posted with the video.
I posted it.
Over there, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Great cars.
My two stars over here.
Hey, great cars. It was really hot, but really nice.
Closer to the hundred thousand dollars, because I know they need a hundred thousand dollars to get to the Macy's Parade. That's total.
Total. Total.
Because it's the three schools. It's Damian.
Right.
St. Lucy's and Pomona Catholic.
So I don't, I don't have the exact figures yet, but I'm sure they could always use.
But they could still use donations.
Absolutely. Let's get them there.
Great. Any other? With that, we have the Laverne librarian, Adrian Romero, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'd like to introduce a few events that will be taking place at Laverne Library this month. This Thursday, the library will be hosting a toddler play day at eleven AM. During this program, toddlers ages two to five can participate in activities and, and play with an assortment of toys. Caregivers can interact with others and be given the chance to ask questions from a health educator who focuses on oral health. And on Wednesday, September seventeenth at five PM, we'll be hosting a bilingual interactive concert performed by Natalia in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month for ages six to twelve. Natalia will be performing her original bilingual music where children can dance and sing and learn a little bit of Spanish. And beginning September second and running through October eighteenth, we'll be taking entries for LA County Library's forty-sixth annual bookmark contest. Participants can design their own bookmark and compete with others in their age group to see how they can design the best-looking and original bookmark. Their bookmarks will be displayed at our local library, and the winners from the four age groups at our library will be submitted to the LA County Board of Supervisors. This is to compete with other libraries to have their design chosen to be featured on a bookmark that will be seen throughout LA County. Entry forms can be picked up at Laverne Library or downloaded from LACountyLibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Appreciate that. Josh Goldman, Laverne Chamber of Commerce. Bring him up.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And Councilmember Lau, thank you for that notice about the, the clothing drive. Our girlfriend's cleaning out our closets right now. Yeah, I got it.
So basically, Josh, you're going to have nothing left but underwear and maybe a pair of shorts.
Maybe this jacket. So don't, don't, don't give me too much slack if you see me wearing this all the time. Um, but good evening. Good evening, everybody. We're here on behalf of the Laverne Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to introduce our new executive director, Matt. So I'll just. Please tell, tell the city council about yourself.
My name's Matt. I'm into my third week being the executive director at the Chamber. A lot of big changes are due to come in this upcoming year. With that, we do have the, one of our biggest events coming up, Taste of Laverne, November fifth, at the Metropolitan in Pomona. I grew up going to school here. I graduated from college from ULV. So it's nice to come back and actually work for the community. So with that, it's going to be a new era for the Chamber.
We're excited. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're excited for the Taste of Laverne. That's the same place. That's Stumps, right next to Stumps, right?
Yes, that's correct. It'll be at the same.
It is. It's, it's Stumps, but it's their.
I think the, I think the planning committee thought Metropolitan just had more.
Well, you've confused, I'm looking at going, what's Metropolitan?
I know.
Stumps.
Yeah, but you're, you're going to see a lot more, a lot more advertising and a lot more publicity about it, so we'll make sure that anybody who sees it is aware. And, you know, we're going to be doing a lot more social media. Matt's going to be out in this community a lot. He'll be reaching out to the council to go visit some businesses. So we're really excited. Matt brings a lot of energy, a lot of fresh ideas. So as he said, a lot of things, a lot of good things are to come.
It was great last year. It'll be better this year, so that's wonderful.
And then even better the year after that.
And there you go.
Thanks. Twenty-fifth anniversary of this.
Ah. Very good. We're excited. We're excited. Thank you, and welcome. 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 Thank you, guys, very much. Any other announcements from the community? That would be, no, we're going to go ahead and close announcements. Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. Ila, items on the consent calendar are routine and be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council or a member of the audience requests separate discussion or just wants to make a statement on one of the items. Counsel, do you have any request to pull any of these items? Mr. Domer, were there any requests to pull any of the items on the consent calendar?
There were no items pulled, Mr. Mayor.
With that, do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve the consent.
Do I have a second? Second vote, please.
The consent calendar was moved by Crosby, seconded by Lau, and approved by Bo.
Thank you very much. Tonight, one public hearing item tonight related to zoning amendments. Mr. City Manager, please call forward the staff member who will be reporting.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify. It's one staff report, but it's actually four separate items that you're considering. So what you'll be doing will be holding a vote, opening and holding a vote on each one.
Each one separately?
Yeah, so we have a clean record.
Very good.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll bring forward Candace Bocock, our principal planner, who will be providing the presentation and mission item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, we're bringing forward four ordinances recommended by the planning commission for your consideration tonight. These updates are necessary to help bring the City of Laverne's municipal code into compliance with state law and implement our recently updated general plan. The amendment, the amended ordinances include accessory dwelling units, historic structures, noise regulations, reasonable accommodation, and two-unit housing projects and urban lot splits under SB nine. Each of these ordinances have been reviewed in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and are either exempt or exempt from SEQA or already covered. Quality Act and are either exempt or exempt from SEQA or already covered under the general plan environmental impact report. At this time, I'd like to introduce our consultant, Amanda Tropiana, with the De Novo Group, and she will provide a more detailed presentation on the proposed ordinances. I will come back for the recommendation, and then if you have any questions, we will all be available. Amanda.
Mr. Mayor, just want to note, Candace is also our above and beyond recipient.
Oh, yes, she's our above and beyond. And also, there is a family member here, there was a previous, I think, Public Works Director, Mr. Brian Bocock, welcome again, sir. Welcome to the chambers. You're not a stranger, that's a good thing. Thank you. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for having me back. Excited to be here one more time. So I do have just a brief presentation, and as Candace mentioned, we'll be able to answer any questions you have. So as a reminder of what has brought us here this evening, the city adopted its housing element in November of 2022, and subsequently adopted a comprehensive update to its general plan and certified an environmental impact report for that project in December of 2024. State law requires that cities maintain compliance and consistency between their general plan and other implementation programs, including your zoning code. And several of the ordinances brought forward tonight are just the first tip of making sure that we're following through on those implementation actions that were outlined in both the housing element and the general plan. A little bit more, again, about that compliance with the housing element, again, just because the city worked so diligently to complete that update and receive certification from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, we need to follow through on the commitments that we made in that housing element, otherwise they come back and ask us what's going on and make sure that we're doing what we said we were going to do. So part of the work tonight is to implement programs and actions that were outlined in both the general plan and housing element. The housing element included 29 programs to implement your housing-specific goals. A lot of those, if you remember, were to ensure that your zoning code and other implementation documents are consistent with state law, consistent with the goals and policies of your general plan. So the first topic I'm going to talk a little bit about is the protection to preserve and regulate historic structures. Like to emphasize that this ordinance is unique and specific to events of natural disaster or emergency. It's kind of where it lives in the code, so without seeing the hierarchy, it could seem a little ambiguous, but this is specifically what happens to historic structures when they are damaged during a natural disaster or emergency event. So a historic structure is defined in various ways, but essentially, it may be listed in the National Register of Historic Places, could be certified or preliminary determined by the Secretary of their interiors contributing to the historic significance of a resource or district, could be listed on a state inventory of historic places, could be listed on an individual inventory of historic places that has been prepared and determined to be consistent with the Secretary of the Interior. So this is all to say that places that are historic are specific, they are designated as such and afforded certain protections given that designation. This is a new section, again, to comply with the requirements of what happens to these historic structures in the event of an emergency, and it restricts the demolition or alteration of historic buildings damaged by natural disasters, except in certain circumstances, when it poses a risk to the health and safety of the community or other sorts of issues related to the preservation of that structure that would negate the health and safety of the area.
Question, do we have a list of those structures within the city?
So historic structures, I don't think we have an actual inventory, a list of what would qualify as a historic structure under this definition, because not all Mills Act homes qualify under this. When you're going through a SEQA procedure, it's different than you're doing an actual analysis of homes that are more than 45 years old. But you look at 45 years generally, because anything over 50 is considered, could, is possibly considered historic. This would not cover that. This is something, this new ordinance that regulates historic structures is something that's already been designated by its definition. So again, not everything in the Mills Act is covered. You do have at least one Mills Act home that would be covered, and that's the carry-on structure, is that right? Which is a state-designated historic.
And we do have some of these other, not all four of those qualifying factors, but some of the top-tier factors are listed in the paleo and cultural resources report associated with the general plan that was prepared back in 2018, so it's not brought up to 2025 registration, anything that would have happened over the past seven years, but we do have a partial list that covers the two items of that list.
One of my concerns is the definition of historic structure. It's not found in our municipal code. It to be included somewhere, and can refer to it.
Councilmember, the ordinance actually references the definition of historic structure, which they have up on the PowerPoint, which is contained in our floodplain management ordinance. We could add it into, we could move the definition into this ordinance itself, so it was right in the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, that hardly makes any sense to have it floodplain.
It cross-references it. I'm not sure exactly why, I'm sure it's used in the floodplain ordinance too for FEMA.
FEMA says this, if you can believe it, FEMA came up with this definition, so it ended up living in the floodplain ordinance, but I think to this point, we can certainly have a copy and paste.
Copy and paste.
And make sure it's clear, because without it, it's difficult to determine what is considered a historic structure.
If we use the date of 45 years, I take offense if anything historic is 45 years.
You know, I'm there with you.
Yeah, join the club.
Yeah, I was like, we're all historic.
Yeah, so we can add that.
Absolutely. So it is contained within the code, but in a separate location, we can cross-reference it and copy it here.
If the council wants it's a change that has no substantive difference, we could simply amend the ordinance tonight.
Do we do that on a motion with one?
When you introduce the ordinance, if you so desire, under, this is the ordinance on relating to historic structures and adding the noise, and Section 256090 says meets the definition of a historic structure per 1540030 of this code, we could just say meets the definition of a historic structure as defined below, and then add a new subsection B to say, for purposes of this ordinance, historic structure means, and then just copy the exact same definition.
I think that's what he meant.
Right.
Does that sound good, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, just so we have some sort of a reference to it.
People aren't going to go cross-reference it with the floodplain.
Yeah, we can do that without needing to go back to the planning commission.
Okay.
Next, specific to the noise ordinance, this is to ensure consistency with the noise element, which is embedded as part of your public safety element of your general plan. Noise element is one of your required elements in a general plan, as I'm sure you remember me describing it for years on end. These replace the prior noise ordinance standards, which were really a relic of the County of Los Angeles' standards. When Laverne Incorporated and adopted their first code, they really relied on County of LA standards. So this allows the city an opportunity to, that are define noise limits by the type of use and time of day. It creates customized noise standards relative to noise impacts by sensitive uses. These are things like schools, hospitals, residences. It also creates standards for vibration impacts and mobile construction equipment, and looks at specific exemptions to standards for certain activities. This is like, you know, loud playgrounds out of school, how are you going to mitigate the sound of children playing in the playground, things like that. And it provides some enforcement standards to enhance the city's ability to enforce the standards that it sets forth in this ordinance.
How about the train?
It does provide standards and provides the city the power to determine whether those standards are met. This just generally shows the comparison of those time standards for the prior Los Angeles noise ordinance compared to the proposed noise ordinance. I'd like to stress that these are the exact same standards that were presented in the public safety element of your general plan, they just have to exist in both places. So you've seen these standards before, they're being implemented here in that code. And again, it really revised those exemptions to be specific to issues in Laverne. Prior exemptions talked about like agricultural equipment and things that just over time haven't been as relevant here. It does not include interior noise standards, that's to say that your other components of your California building code and other structural requirements describe what types of equipment and material is used to construct buildings, and by regulating noises that are happening outside of those buildings and then building the building correctly, you're inherently creating those more acceptable interior standards. And we're simplifying the noise ordinance, again, to exclude or remove procedures or uses that are just no longer relevant to Laverne.
Would that include barking dogs or loud music, parties?
The city does have other nuisance and noise complaint issues. It's not based on decibel levels, but there are other issues where code enforcement does take action, and there's a process for implementing that.
These would only be for decibel?
Right. Equipment, things like that.
Yeah.
As was previously mentioned, the city prepared and certified an environmental impact report as part of your general plan update. Given that these municipal code revisions implement the goals and policies consistent with that general plan, and that general plan EIR was certified by the city council in December of 2024, this, these ordinances are covered in part by that analysis conducted, meaning there is no significant change or daylight between those two documents. Additionally, we find that some of these are exempt from SEQA by the common sense exemption, simply meaning that the implementation of that ordinance can't possibly have an effect, a physical effect on the environment, and therefore would be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. This item was presented to the planning commission in June of this year, and they did recommend approval. And with that, I'll allow Ms. Bocock to come back for the staff recommendation.
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Jeremy Conrad, he's on the planning commission, back there in the back there. Hello, Jeremy. Thank you for all your work you've done.
Hello.
So the recommendation is that city council, based on the planning commission recommendation, is to introduce by title only and way further readings for the following ordinances. Now, do we need to read each one, or how?
Do we have a staff report on the other three ordinances?
No.
No, this would...
This is for the four.
Since there are four ordinances, as our attorney has stated, we're going back to ask if there are any city council questions on staff on any of the proposed ordinance amendments. If not, we are going to take the amendments one at a time, allowing public comments first, then after council comments, and then we'll ask for a motion in a second before conducting the vote and moving up to the next ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, can I just give a brief overview of the other ordinances? This was on, I think Amanda's presentation very well covered, the ordinance to implement the Laverne general plan.
ADU.
I just want to touch on the ADU, the reasonable accommodation in the SB 9 ordinances, going in order that's in your packet. The ADU ordinance, and the SB 9 ordinance, but they're drafted separately, the ADU ordinance implements the most current version of state law. As you know, they change it every single year on us, and every single year, we're playing catch-up to implement those changes. So I don't think there's anything in here really that isn't required by state law with the one exception that we did add a provision on historic properties, that if the property is already subject to a Mills Act contract with the city, construction has to comply with the contract standards, including design conformance with the Secretary of Interior Standards, and the Mills contract would need to be amended to authorize the ADU on the site. But pretty much everything else, and this is state law, the biggest change to this is they've increased the number of ADUs that can be done on multifamily development. With a multifamily development, it is now up to eight if there's an existing building on a, eight if there's an existing building on a lot, if it's being built with a new multifamily, then it's only two. And they've raised the height limit slightly. So that is the ADU ordinance.
You're going to have a total of eight units on the lot?
Eight, excuse me, eight ADUs on a multifamily lot and the actual multifamily dwelling unit. Of course, it still has to actually fit on the lot.
It has to go by all the criteria and the setbacks and everything else, but...
But that's nothing that the city can do anything about. That is the state shoving it down our throats.
It's really with lot splits, accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units, the lot clearances, the heights, I know, it's SB 9, that's Scott Weiner from the state of California.
And I think to clarify is that eight is the maximum allowed, but again, back to there are still other portions that have to be complied with that would potentially restrict it to less.
There are very few other requirements, but yes, there is still some. I mean, they still have to meet your four-foot side and rear yard setbacks, they still have to meet minimum size.
Right, and I don't know how many properties actually have that, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
The problem is, is that if they meet the criteria, we cannot restrict them.
Correct.
And that's the sad reality, you know, but we haven't seen too many of those. We've seen a few ADUs that people have complained about, but not as many as I thought, but expensive to build. Okay, so...
The next ordinance was covered by Amanda, the historic and...
Should we vote?
I'd like, if we go through them all and see if there's any public comment on all of them.
We're going to do one at a time.
Okay, okay.
So our first order of business is going to be, do you want to finish what you were doing?
Either way.
Yeah, she's going to go through the entirety of the staff report with all the different elements, then we're going to go back and each zoning ordinance, going to then open the public hearing, get public comments, close the public comments, take any council comments, vote on it, move to the next.
It's fine.
Well, it's fine, but I guess my thought is, while it's top of mind and she just went through the ADUs, why don't we do the comments on the ADUs? Vote on the ADUs.
I agree. Let's do that. Do we have any council comments on the ADUs? Before we go to public comment? Okay, we're going to go ahead and have a public comment on the ADUs and the accessory ADUs, just the ADUs and the whole with lot splits. Is there any public comment on that?
Yeah.
Yes.
This introduction.
We have a close public comment. Back up to the dais, do we have any comments from council on the ADU segment?
Nope, just move to approve.
Second?
This would be moved to introduce.
Introduce.
Okay.
All second.
Vote, please.
Item 7, recommendation 1, was moved by Crosby, seconded by Lau, approved 5-0.
Okay, the next ordinance in your packet is the one that Amanda just went over, the historic and noise, so if you want to open the public hearing on that one, then...
I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment on the noise ordinance? Do we have anyone that wants to speak on the noise ordinance? That would be no, I'm going to bring it back to the dais. Is there any comments from council on the noise ordinance? If not, I'll take a motion.
Noise and historic.
Yeah, I do have one, just because we have, we've had a resident come up multiple times, especially about the pickleball courts and right, right, lives on the homes right there. Does this affect that, or does it make it less, or because it might be a special activity of being part of a park, that it might be exempt from that?
So park noise and noise associated with schools are exempt from the noise ordinance? So this would not affect it separately on that issue? Yeah, we are looking at noise attenuation boards and lots that is, but yeah.
Silencers on the paddles?
But to be clear, there are no ordinances in regards to the park noise.
No, noise generally... So this would not affect it on separately on that issue. Yeah, we are looking at noise attenuation boards and lots stuff, but yeah.
Silencers on the paddles.
But to be clear, there are no ordinances in regards to the park noise.
No, noise generally, those parks and the schools are exempt. Yeah, we do limit it through, you know, our rules and regulations for.
The hours of operation.
But it is exempt. Thank you. Yes.
And then the motion for this one would be to introduce this ordinance with the amendment to section two fifty six oh nine oh to make the existing paragraph subsection A. Just say that meets the definition of historic structure and delete the cross-reference and make a new subsection B that says historic structure means. And then we will drop in the language from fifteen forty oh three oh of the code directly rather than including the cross-reference.
It will be out of flood control.
It will remain in the flood control, but it will also be here verbatim.
Do we need to make an amendment to the?
So, so that would be, so to move as amended.
Okay.
Introduce as amended.
I will move as amended by our attorney.
Do I have a second? Vote please.
Item seven, recommendation two, as amended, was approved five oh. It was moved by Lau and seconded by Johnson.
The next ordinance in your packet is a reasonable accommodation ordinance. I believe this was one of your housing element policies to update the reasonable accommodation, even if it wasn't. The city's ordinance was out of date. This ordinance is a model that was based on, I think the city of Oakland. They had come up with a new draft. They were challenged by a disability rights group. This was the ordinance that came out of the negotiations. So we kind of feel it has the blessing of the disability rights groups and it just sets forth a new policy. And this one would be exempt under one five oh six one B three of SEQA of the common census exception that, that, that it's not a project. It's just setting forth policies and procedures.
Thank you. I'm gonna open up public comment on this. Do we have any public comment on this item? No, it's exciting. I'll jump out of your chair. Okay, we're gonna close public comment. Do we have anything on the dais? Any council comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Introduce. To introduce the waiver of the reading.
Introduce and waive further reading.
Second. Thank you.
Vote please.
Bam.
Item seven, recommendation three, motion by Cashel Figuita, seconded by Crosby, approved five oh.
Okay, your final ordinance tonight is against state law changes that were made in the last legislative set session relating to two-unit housing developments on a single lot and the urban lot splits. This is what essentially allows four units to be built on one lot, two primary units and two accessory dwelling units or an ADU and a JADU or two on each lot. These changes just parallel state law as to what has to be done. If somebody divides a lot by an SB nine, they cannot further split the lot. It's a one-time-only procedure that you get to use. And if you are a developer, you can't really use an SB nine because you have to be living in one of the units on the lot. So you couldn't do a lot split and live, live on both lots. The, the biggest change in the state legislation was that the city could not impose objective standards that were not being imposed on the main unit. So a lot of cities, and I can't remember whether Laverne did this or not. I don't think we did, but they'd say you're, you know, we have no size limits in Laverne on our primary units, but they'd say your secondary unit could only be eight hundred square feet. State said no. Get no different regulations on one primary unit from another primary unit. And they just clarified what we kind of all knew that you had to do sixty day approval. And if you deny it, you've got to give them reasons in writing. And like the ADU ordinance, this one specifically exempt from SEQA from the provisions of, by the provisions of the statute itself.
Very good. I'm gonna open up public comment on this one. Another exciting item. Seeing no public comment, I'm gonna close this. And any comments from council? And I would ask that there be a motion to introduce by title only and waive further reading.
I move introduce by title only and waive further reading of the fourth and last ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Vote please.
Item seven, recommendation four, was moved by Lau, seconded by Johnson and was approved five oh.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, guys. That was interesting. There are two items on the discussion calendar tonight. First is the Los Angeles Metro Lone Hill Avenue to White Avenue Double Track Project Update and Traffic Signal Concept Discussion. City Manager Domer, please call for the staff member who will be reporting.
Thank you. I'm gonna bring up Cody Howing.
Cody.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Yes, this evening we have members of Metro here with us as well as their consultant staff to give counsel and overview of the LA Metro Lone Hill to White Avenue Double Track Project. It's been a little bit over a year since this project has been brought before council. And so the point is to bring an update to council and also highlight a particular detail that involves a potential signalization of a U-turn pocket on Arrow Highway as a result of some of the changes that might come from this project on Sandy Miss Canyon. So with that, I will pass the presentation on to Mr. J.C. Montenegro. And at the conclusion of his presentation, we're all available for questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Montenegro. Again, we see each other.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Good evening, staff and city of Laverne. Thank you for having us tonight. Again, my name is J.C. Montenegro. I'm the San Gabriel Valley Area Manager for LA Metro Local Government and Community Relations. Just to provide a little bit of background on the Lone Hill to White Project. It's Metro's plan, Metro's transit improvement plan includes adding a second mainline track along a three point nine mile segment between Lone Hill Avenue in San Dimas and White Avenue in Laverne. The project includes quiet zone ready upgrades to roadways and sidewalks, new and upgraded track and pedestrian crossing, equipment and, and improvements to drainage and landscaping. The second mainline track will allow opposing trains to operate on separate, on separate tracks, enhancing the flow of both MetroLink and Union Pacific trains while improving on-time performance and schedule reliability. The existing railway owned by Metro is part of the San Gabriel subdivision and serves both MetroLink commuter, commuter rail approximately thirty-eight trains daily and Union Pacific Railroad freight service up to four trains daily. The project is nearing the hundred percent design completion milestone status and continues to actively seek construction funding. In mid-April, a study session was held with city council that proposed project features at the rail crossing at Sandy Miss Canyon Road. The features in light blue here in the image show the modified features. The ones in green show, represent no change and the orange shows the new features. The proposed changes created a mandatory free ride condition for northbound traffic approaching the intersection at Arrow Highway. My colleague Brian Baldurama will take us into more detail on these features and more details on the project.
Great. Thank you. Brian Baldurama, Deputy Executive Officer for Regional Rail and Project Manager for the Lone Hill to White Double Track. So when we presented to you last, we were, we had to bring some bad news as well as good news from the project team. The bad news at that time, back in April, was to let you know now that the Gold Line project was already completed in the Sandy Miss Canyon Avenue area for their construction improvements, that California Public Utilities Commission was treating the Lone Hill to White project not as an addition or enhancement to that project, but completely separate. So their ruling at that time was to close Sandy Miss Canyon Avenue. And with, we went through every possible option with them at that time and presented a solution that would not only maintain the access for Sandy Miss Canyon, but provide you with the quiet zone designation that we did from the start of the project. With all of your commitment to the project and continued support at our last meeting, we got your approval. The update is since that time, we took it from concept. We've brought it to a ninety percent draft submittal. Right now, we're working with the team to take it to a draft a hundred percent submittal. The item that we're bringing in front of you is based on some new information. It's not as bad as the last time. The update is as we're being informed of the improvements that are going on from the county with their synchronization project along Arrow Highway. It made us and your staff look at this U-turn that was being proposed at the solution brought to you a year ago. And one of the outcomes that we did was take it through a warrant analysis, which is additional traffic analysis to see what is the best solution? Do we leave it unsignalized or do we move forward with the signalization? After we went through our warrant analysis, it was proven that this specific proposed U-turn would be warranted for a traffic signal in coordinating with the county and their team. Once all of our design improvements are online and this project goes into construction, it can fold in as an additional modification to the county's signalized system so that this one signal is not out of sync from the entire interchanges or intersections along your Arrow Highway. Safety concern is the biggest concern for Metro and all of our improvements that were, what we put out there for you is better than what you have as well as why we looked into it in so much detail with your team. Left turn analysis does accommodate enough storage for all of your traffic coming out of Sandy Miss Canyon Road. Our team will continue to analyze if, if additional storage is needed at that location before we go to signature. In the meantime, what we're putting for you today for your approval is to add the signalization improvements that are currently not there. We studied it as a design and, and analysis part, but our plans currently don't have that element folded into it. And before we as Metro took action to modify our consultant's scope of work, we wanted to present that change for your full concurrence or definitely your consideration. Your concurrence is great, but we wanted to take that in front of you. Next steps. Like I said, with your approval, we can modify our design contract, fold that into our, our next submittal, which is coming up this fall for a draft a hundred percent. We continue to seek every opportunity for state and federal funding for the construction of this project. We're meeting with assembly members, not only on the local, but on the state level as well. Every opportunity that's possible, every new grant cycle that comes up, we make sure that your project is top of mind for consideration. We will be reporting back to our board by the end of this calendar year. At the same time, we wanted to have our draft a hundred percent ready level to make sure we have all of their full support and commitment to keep pushing this project to a signature level ready and get it into construction. So with that, any question?
I'm looking at this drawing signal, signalization of the proposed U-turn on Arrow Highway. This is just not clear to me how that U-turn is.
Okay.
East of Sandy Miss Canyon.
Yes. It's about fourteen feet east of Sandy Miss Canyon. Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So the U-turn is gonna be implemented or it's not?
The U-turn was included in your last year's recommendation. After learning more about what the county was doing with their signal improvement program along Arrow Highway that we start looking at is just leaving it unsignalized the best solution. So now we're in front of you. We did the traffic analysis. A signal, traffic signal is warranted for that proposed U-turn, but we wanted your, your approval before we went through our contracts on our side.
Okay, and we don't have a drawing necessarily. We don't have.
So this would be like a concept of that specific location of where your U-turn is. The, and then we would add all of our, our signals there for.
If you flip back about three page two, it is at the very end from the far right.
The far right arrow blue?
Yes.
Where that.
Fourteen hundred feet.
Is gonna be.
And one of the reasons for the fourteen hundred feet, and I'll let them talk about it, is just the ability to eventually get over three lanes. So the safety factor and all that.
Correct. Yeah, so the right turn isolated from the through movement coming on Arrow Highway allows for traffic to freely make that right turn. But the decisions that it would require to get them over to that left lane is where the fourteen, fourteen hundred feet comes from.
I appreciate these changes being made and the signal. I know when you came last, we had at least one resident speaking on behalf of that community, though not happy making it a right-hand turn only, but making it accessible of a U-turn. But a light needs to be that for the U-turn because of how much traffic is coming down Arrow.
No, we completely understood. The community's concern.
What you've done for our residents.
But we were happy to be able to announce that we can keep that open for them.
From our area.
Yes.
Our residents there, plus the residents that stand in the side and county side all coming through. There's a lot of people that live there.
And that Sandy Miss side is their own HOA, which they have to maintain their roads. So concern of our resident having to always drive through that community. So it really addresses that too.
So we're basically, you have a U-turn. We want a signalization there at the fourteen hundred foot mark over here. On this side here coming in, you still have the cue to turn right.
Correct.
Coming into Sandy Miss Canyon.
Yes.
But you cannot turn left onto Sandy Miss Canyon.
Cannot turn left out of Sandy Miss Canyon. You cannot turn left out of Sandy Miss onto.
Onto Arrow.
Westbound going.
That's why you gotta come this way and do a U-turn. Okay, I'm up to speed now. Yeah, there was the big concern about the queuing and how many cars would stacking.
Right.
And the other problem is now that you've got the, you've got the, the A-line Gold Line.
Yes.
That's gonna, so we need to like pay close attention to their queuing and they're stacking on that too. So you're gonna, you're gonna do another traffic study. Is that correct?
Well, the county already is doing their traffic.
They're doing it now.
Yeah, they're doing it now.
I think right now, probably within the next, when September nineteenth comes up and they open up that station and we're pre-revenue testing right now to see how that affects with the signalization and those trains coming.
Yes.
Every five to eight minute intervals to see how that queuing is to pay very close attention. And it's not so much midday, it's the morning and the afternoon when the traffic really hits. People are coming home, but then you've got people coming down Sandy Miss Canyon and you've got people going out. But the signalization and the crossarms on the tracks on the A-line area is gonna be real critical to pay attention to.
Noted.
And I, and this is good. I mean, obviously it's not the best of the solutions, but you definitely need a signal over there.
Yeah, it winds up being the least impactful construction rise to your residents. A year ago, the consideration was closure and replacement. A year ago, the consideration was closure and replacement, put a grade separated structure in this tiny stretch.
That would have been hundreds of millions of dollars. And where are you going to get that money?
Not only the money, where do we put the tie-in point?
Well, you have to have the, and now that you've got the tracks up there, so.
Correct.
It's almost impossible. It's too short of a time, too short of a area.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, council, we're gonna?
Well, I just wanted to kind of give a heads up as to where that U-turn is going to take place. It's right where Grandstand property was and property will be purchased.
The blank property.
And how that's gonna.
That's gonna affect it later.
How that's gonna, that development, when and if it happens.
So with the future development project, that's something the university has to consider because there will be additional improvements that need to be made for that next advanced that grid crossing.
Especially after coming out into that area.
Yeah.
If they build 100 or 200 homes or a commercial, you're gonna have to think about those people coming out there and you're gonna have to realign it, just like, you'll have to realign it. Yeah.
Yeah. So right now, it's designated for their private access.
Right now, for what, the residence?
So for all of their tenants and yes, they're already on notice.
Well, we, if you knew, you had a crystal ball. That answer, Steve? That clears it up for me really well. It's not the best, but it's, it's good. At least we move forward and we're kind of addressing everything for our residents to get in and out, and that's the most important thing.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and open up public comment. Any public comment on this item? No public comment, or we're gonna close public comment? Any other comments from?
I just have a question. So in modifying the contract to incorporate this new scope, what are we anticipating in I know you're seeking additional funds, but what's?
The funds that I'm seeking at this time are for construction. With my board motion when we came to you last year, we already included contingency into our budget approval process. So at Metro has local funds, we have the funds necessary to modify those changes. We just wanted to get your concurrence before we went through a contractual issue.
Okay, good. So there's enough contingency to take care of that. Perfect. Thank you.
So you have full funding on the signalization and the realignments and everything?
Yes.
Wonderful. That's nice to hear. Thank you. With that, is there a motion to provide concurrence with the proposed design updates presented, including signalization of a U-turn pocket on Arrow Highway that would be constructed as part of the regional transportation improvements?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Vote please.
Sometimes you guys come out so close at the same time.
Right there.
That item was moved by Johnson, seconded by Lau, and approved by O.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Look forward to the, and you'll be in contact with our staff and letting us know what's going on and outreach, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next discussion item is the City Council Committee and Liaison Assignments for 2025, Who's reporting on this, Mr. Domon?
I can do that.
Oh, I think it'd be a good idea.
What was that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good idea. Okay. Well, this is the, as the council knows, on a regular basis, though we haven't done it in two years or so, the city council appoints delegates and liaisons of various regional agencies, local committees, local community groups, and other items like that for representation purposes and for serving, you know, local community groups and regional boards. So this is the item. We're updating it at this point. We've added a couple ones. We've gone through and made sure that hopefully everything is on there. As part of the agenda item was the listing, and there are about, I believe, 20, 30 actual different assignments that can be made. So again, some of these are committees, and these would be liaisons to those committees that you will be appointing people to. There are city council subcommittees, so there would be a delegate or two. There are regional agencies, much like the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, the Vector Control District, other items like that, SCAG, that there would be a delegate and an alternate, or just a delegate, depending on their criteria. And then two local community groups, such as the Fourth of July Committee, the BO, the Bonita Unified School District Ad-hoc Committee, CASSI, and the University of Laverne Liaison, and the Youth Sports Working. So at this time, we are asking for you all five to look through the list and go through it. I do have a blank so that I can write down, so we understand who you are appointing. But if we can start going by the numbers, and they are numbered on the far left, starting with the liaison to the Infrastructure and Active Transportation Committee, getting a liaison and an alternate. Currently, there are some that are already in red. We did kind of seek some, if you wanted to be on these committees. And so if there's only one person in there, that one person really wanted it. If there's none, we need somebody to be designated. And if there's a multiple, it was kind of a tie because some people wanted it, and so that's where the decision-making comes in. So at that, I will leave it to you all.
Okay.
We just want to go one.
Start with one. So I know you and I were on the original one, we both, but it's only one person, is that correct?
Alternate also.
But do they both go to the meetings?
No, just one.
Okay, so we changed what we used to do.
Unless the food is good.
There's no food. So you're, I'm good with that. Wendy, if you're good with that, I'm good with that. One, everybody good? Move on to two.
I will take myself off the alternate list because there seems to be other people with a burning desire, so I'm fine with taking myself off as alternate for finance.
Anybody else? Crosby?
No, but I, I left my list at home. Can we put it up so that the residents see it as well?
We have another one?
Sorry.
Rick, are you interested in that?
No.
Okay, so that leaves me. Okay. Okay, Johnson Hepburn, we're good. I do too, but I, I think that, I do like Parks and Rec though, like you, but I think that would be good, and then we can, we can jump around if we want to sometimes. Okay. Everybody else? I don't know. Who is interested? Anybody else interested? Guys, who?
Go forth and do good things.
That means you're out. Okay, Johnson.
I like to be, I love Parks and Rec.
You want to do that?
Parks and Rec, I'll do that.
Okay, so.
Parks and Rec.
Okay. Lau Johnson. Okay. Okay, Public Finance and Authority, Johnson or Hepburn?
So you just need to pick which one is the liaison and which one's the alternate.
I've been on that for a while. It's up to you, Steve, whatever you want to do. Okay, and I'll be the, I'll be the alternate, guys?
Yep.
What's that?
We'll get there. We'll get there. Let's just get there. Or no. Oh, you mean like that?
Yeah, we'll go.
Is it the same people?
Scratch 20. You got it, it's a duplication.
Yes, because I was on that and I needed to take myself off of it.
Okay, Senior Advisory Committee, we just have to, one of us show up every once in a while, it's fine. We're good with that. Youth and Family, Rick, you're in. Steve or Wendy?
I'm fine either way. Steve, do you want it? The alternate? Doesn't matter to me.
Well, usually it's both of us.
Well, now it's liaison and then an alternate, so it's you unless you're not there.
Yeah. You want Wendy or you, Stevie? Wendy, you're done. Yeah, you're off. Okay, City Council Subcommittee's Economic Development Subcommittee, Hepburn and Lau. We're on number seven. I'm, I'm fine with it. We need to make an alternate, or we just do it like it is, we just leave it alone?
Since it's a subcommittee, it's the two of you.
That's fine. Are you guys okay with that? Move on. Number eight, Legislative Committee, Cash and Crosby. Yes, you good? Okay. Okay, okay. California Joint Powers Authority, Crosby and Cash. Yes, you good with that, Steve? Or do you want to do that?
Steve, you want it?
You enjoyed it last time. You want to be on there?
Okay, so take Cash out as alternate and put Steve?
Yeah, Steve, you're alternate. Is that cool?
I want to eat the food.
Oh, yeah.
The food is good.
It is. We have Fairflex Liaison, Lau or Cash?
I'd like to keep it because it's right next.
And Cash, alternate?
Sure.
We good with that? Everybody good? Foot Hill Transit, Crosby or Hepburn? Crosby.
Yes, I've been on that.
Crosby. I know. Who wants to be an alternate? I've been an alternate and he always goes, so it's not an issue, but up to you guys. You want to be an alternate?
A week from this, next Friday.
But you're always there. You want to keep me on there, guys?
Good food, Cash. Good food.
Foot Hill Transit.
Wow.
I'm an Army guy.
So basically, you're leaving me on, is that correct? Wendy?
I'll take, I'll go as alternate, that's fine. It's in Los Caminos.
They're good people. They're real good people, they're a lot of fun. Gold Line Phase Two, Joint Powers Authority. I kind of have to stay on that, guys, because I'm appointed by the City of Pasadena.
And yes, it is still ongoing.
And it is still ongoing.
So we include the phase three.
Now, do we have an alternate for that? No, I mean, is there really an alternate? Because it's an appointed position. The same as the council of governments.
Let's, let's put one, and if not, I will confirm.
I don't.
Yeah.
Cash?
Sure.
Those are generally 11 o'clock, and sometimes I belong to two of them, so that's 11 o'clock and 12 o'clock, something like that. But it doesn't, whatever. I don't think there's an alternate on that. But LA County Select City Selection Committee, Cash, you were there last time I was doing it. Anybody want to do that? It's, I'm gonna warn you guys, it's a real pain. A lot of times, they don't have a quorum, you have to be in LA, you have to be just depending, trying to change the matrix to do it on, that you can do.
I know, I was like, so far, it's not.
Guys, I've been in LA and they cancel it, so you know, it's been, it's been rough, so.
Where is it in LA?
I think, yeah, I think they're trying to get alternate sites now so more people can.
Well, they also try to do it with Zoom.
Yeah.
So, I mean, Cash, you went last time.
Yes.
Who wants to be the alternate?
You can put me down as alternate. If it's in LA, I can go into the office.
Okay, there you go. LA County Sanitation District, that's gonna have to be me and Cash. It's a mayor and a mayor pro tem, so.
You're good, that's fine.
We want to make sure we can still flush. Okay. League of California Cities, LA do it. Yeah. Stevie? That's a good one. It's an important one. Who wants to be an alternate on that one? They meet like every three months or every quarter. Yeah.
So it's not the first Thursday of each month?
No, 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 no. It's a kind of a neat one, you get to see a lot of people from the different cities. It's, it's kind of cool.
If it's, yeah, that's, you can put me as the alternate.
I think they feed you too, as Cash would say, you know. You want to?
That's fine, you can put me as alternate.
Hey, Lau. Pomona Valley Transportation Authority, Crosby.
Yes, I'm the president right now.
I think you're gonna stay there.
You might have to stay, yeah.
Who wants to be an alternate? Lau or Johnson?
Sure.
You good with that?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm, I'm going to LA twice, so we're fine.
Okay. Singer Valley Council of Governments, that's easy. We're gonna do, there's really no alternate, but.
Oh, there's not.
No, if you want, well, I was the president, so you don't alternate a president, so it's kind of hard to do that. But I would say you can have an alternate now because I'm, now I'm on a past president, so.
Yeah, it's in case you can't go, just to coverage, so.
Steve? Singer Valley Council of Governments. Southern California Association of SCAG, Steve, you're good with that? I'm good with it. You guys good with that?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yep.
Yeah? Rice City Medical Health, Lau and Johnson. You guys good with that?
Perfect.
Golf. Crosby.
Crosby.
Crosby. Wonder why?
It is 7:30 though, Cash.
You want to be the alternate?
Okay, then why are these, okay.
But the food is good.
The food is good.
And you never miss a meeting, so.
You okay?
Oh, yeah, I was like, wait, I was like, what time is it?
Cash.
You're alternate.
He grabbed that club out of his hand. Singer Valley Mosquito, Vector Control. Cash, you're staying on there. Who wants to be an alternate on that?
There, there is no alternate on that, that's by code.
That's why you said none. But none means that there was none applied, or there was none available, you don't have one.
Oh, none is meaning.
So you have.
None, okay.
Okay.
Public Financing, we're out of that one. Community Groups.
Fourth of July.
Which is Lau, and we have a vacant position? Is that correct? Who wants to be Fourth of July? Cheerleader, Cash?
Nobody wants to come with me, that, right? Okay.
Okay, Cash. Bonita Education Foundation, we already got that. You guys good with that?
Yep.
The USD Ad-hoc Committee.
Good, have fun.
Crosby, yeah. We've been doing to that. But it's two of us.
It's just both, two, both of us have been.
I'm okay to keep that on there like it was. Are you good with that? Are you okay with that if we stay on that?
And then Cash could be an alternate if we can't, one of us can't show.
Okay. Well, unless you'd like, I know you've got kids in the system, unless you'd like to be.
In the system.
School. My kids are so gone, I got grandkids. Never mind, you're, you're an alternate, you upset me. So Crosby and Hepburn. Cash, Cash, you're an alternate, okay?
Thank you.
Christmas morning. It's all you, Cash. Okay, nice, nice job. And do we have an alternate on that one?
Uh-uh, there's none.
I mean, really, all of us are involved, it's just, I mean, we don't need it, we don't need that to be official. Come on, seriously. Right? I mean, we're all gonna be involved anyway. Hi, everybody out there, I know this, enjoy us making our assignments. Cultural awareness and social inclusion committee.
The meeting time is wrong. It's the first Tuesday.
First Tuesday. I know I've been doing that with you, Wendy, I haven't been available.
I'm good.
Do we have someone with, oh, is it just one person now?
No, it's vacant.
Okay.
It's fun. It's good people.
It is. Okay, Cash, and alter, do we need an alternate?
That's because I usually bring snacks.
There's two people? Do we need an alternate? Okay. Mobile Home Park, I'd like to stay on that. Johnson, you want to be a alternate on that, or Hepburn and Crosby on the Mobile Home Park Liaison?
I was gonna, yeah.
I don't think so. Uh, you know what?
I would say...
I would say yes.
Yeah.
You're out.
And I like, I like to stay on it, though, too.
I would too, because we're right in the middle of a lot of...
Yeah, I think if we keep the two of you, that's fine.
Okay, so we don't need, because one of us shows, one of, okay. University Liver and Liaison, Heffernan Lau. I'm good with that.
Am I a conflict, if it's informational? It's, if I am, then I'm, I'll remove myself.
An abundance of questions? Sure.
All right.
You know, I hate to have that happen, but I think you need to be careful.
Yeah, no, too. Do we need an alternate for that?
Well, I think there's two people, correct?
Whenever.
Is that two people, Ken?
It, it's, it can be two people, it's a liaison if there's anything that we have to talk to them about.
Steve?
We have related relations.
Johnson?
Perfect.
Youth Sports Working Group. Oh. Um, I think that's fine the way it is. You good with that, Wendy?
Yeah.
But you're going to fill us in on the parks right there.
Yeah.
We're good with that? We're good with, as is. There you go.
And so, if there's a motion to approve the list as so noted, we will get this...
Uh, don't I have to open up public comment on this first?
Oh, yes, you do.
Yes.
Just explain to me.
Cash, you want to close your button off? Uh, I'm going to open up public comment on these items, anybody wishes to speak on these items with our assignments, or anybody wants to complain about it, please come on up. And I didn't think so.
Who wants me on their committee?
Yeah. We're going to close public comment, we're going to move it up the dais. Is there any other comments or changes to this?
Laurie says, uh, Steve got put too much...
Off of all of them. Let's read. Laurie, I'm not buying your dinner if we have to go through all 30 of these again, please. Um, with that, do I have a motion to approve all of the new assignments for the, uh, council assignments for all the committees? And we will change these as we have more committees coming up, as we do some realignments. But right now, this is what we have. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Vote, please.
Motion by Lau, seconded by Cash Al Feguita. Approve 5-0.
Very good.
Um, just a comment on the, on these two, it's been a while since we've looked at these. Can we just make sure that these are just looked at every year, so that in case there are changes that we may make?
I would say, and then update us now and let us know with a calendar, a posting on the calendar with, because a lot of people don't know the times and the dates of these meetings. And please, on the Senior Advisory Committee, we really do want to have representation on that, so make sure that we, uh, send it out and someone says, yes, I'll be there. A lot of times, I'll go because it's easy for me in the morning, I can go before I go to work, but, okay.
And generally, going forward, now that we're, we will have the consistent November election, uh, with the new council coming in in December and making a, you know, mayor, mayor pro tem decision at that time. Generally, in January, first meeting in February, we'll bring these back to you, um, starting in what would be January, February 2027, after the November 26th election. If there's a need to make a change prior to that, we could always bring it back, that certain item, or do whatever, yeah.
Why can't they be done the same time as the mayor, mayor pro tem? Because we're doing all jobs, just do all jobs.
Correct, but generally, at that time, if there's a new member on council, uh, that's their first meeting.
We pile them on.
So.
Get them, get them signed.
They may not know where the good food is, and so we want to give them an opportunity.
Oh, excuse me, no election last time. Shall we, yeah, uh-huh. All right, that is true. As there is no other business tonight, so we move on to public comments. It's the time set aside for anyone wishing to address the city council on items not listed on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Brown Act prohibits the city council from engaging in discussion on any, I am not on the posted agenda. Your concerns may be referred to staff or placed on discussion at a later date. Uh, there is a time limit if we have to use that. At this time, we're wishing to speak, come on up to the podium. Ms. Kalusek. Uh, she's exhausted. We wore her out with the committees.
Oh, this was an easy meeting, I missed the, the bad one last time.
It wasn't bad, it was very informative.
The long one, yes, but I watched it after, so.
Oh, my gosh.
Anyway, well, you know, I got to know what's going on. Kathy Kalusek, Third Street. Hey, I just have a question, could you talk about, uh, apply for city committee? Um, I mean, I'm confused, it says Planning Commission, five vacancies and all that. I know some of these are new, so I can see that, but I have a question on that, are there actually five? That didn't make sense to me. Anyway, that's it, thank you.
We'll have the city manager, once we're all done, we'll have the city manager comment on that one, he's got, and we, we have all the same question. Anybody else on public comment? Archie, no public comment? Come on. Archie, he was out in the front when Cash and I were doing a, the, um, new commission and have you, have you applied? And Archie was so gracious to be in the video, so he'll be on social media blasting all over, you're going to have a million hits, Archie, there you go.
Well, I feel like a fish out of water right now, but, uh...
You're always welcome here, sir.
Yeah.
Please.
And I, I hate to bring up a negative, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if this is the...
Yes, it is.
Form for.
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay. Uh, what I'm, uh, dealing with is, um, I live on Seventh and D. Okay? And it's a nice family street and stuff like that, it's, it's, I love it. But, uh, a few months ago, we had a bust next door to me, okay? And it turns out, the guy is a sexual child molester, okay? And it's made the whole street very uncomfortable. And we got a petition up, and I'm not sure what you guys can do about it. I just wanted to make you guys aware of it, you know, so... Yeah, that's, that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
We, we know about it, but I'll let the city manager talk about what's going on. Our police department's fully aware of what's happening.
Okay.
Mark's here too, but I, I think I'll let the city management, Mark Gutierrez, our, uh, detective is also. And Captain Tibbetts and Chief Gonzalez, can you come up once we're done with public comment?
They took him away and then they brought him back, and he's very comfortable. And like I said, if you need our petition, Manny has it for us.
Thank you, appreciate that, thank you, Archie, appreciate it.
Just give you, let you...
No, thank you for the, for the information. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, afterwards, I'll also, um, ask for Chief Gonzalez to come up.
I think, yeah, that would be great, I think we... Yvonne?
Hi.
Gallegos?
Um, yes, Gallegos. I'm going back to the committees. Um, so I just want to make sure there's no opening on YFAC, correct? So when I go on, on the website, it has Don Kendrick and Denise Fisher with terms that ended or end in June of 2024. So is it, is it true that there are no openings on YFAC? So that's my first question. And then, um, again, from the website, when it goes into the description of some of the, um, some of the committees. So one of the newer ones, right, is the Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, it reads, "The committee provides advisory input to the city council on programs, events, and future planning efforts, supporting community needs, cost recovery, recreational facilities, and the development of parks and cultural initiatives." So when I go into that, right, um, and it says, okay, like, there, you know, there's members pending, 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 right? Obviously, because it's a new commission, but the description is different, leaving out cultural initiatives. So I want to get a, you know, I'd like to get some clarification on whether or not, um, cultural initiatives is indeed a part of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We're going to close public comment, bring up the dais, uh, that we have, uh, regarding the, you want to have, uh, chief talk about Seventh and E? Well, we can do that because there's multiple questions on that, so we'll... Chief, do you mind coming up and speaking on the issue with the, uh, individual on Seventh and E, Seventh Street?
The council members.
He can just say one.
Uh, forgive me if I speak in generalities, there's some information that I can share and some information that I cannot share. Um, as Mr., Mr. Archie, I don't know his last name, but, uh, as he mentioned, uh, that there was an arrest on Seventh Street. And I think for the public's information, that, uh, that arrest came through the due diligence of our detectives. And, uh, that was discovered, we did make an arrest, uh, and once that subject was arrested, he did appear in court. Uh, due to zero bail policies, he was released. Um, so when, it wasn't the police department that brought him back, but zero bail policies allowed him to come back. One of the conditions was that he was to register with the local agency, which he has, and we've done our review of his file. Uh, we've indicated, uh, or we've alerted the community of the rights that, uh, those have. And in 2015, uh, of course, uh, removed that blanket, uh, condition in where anyone who falls under Megan's law, that 2,000-foot rule, uh, or that 100 yards, uh, no longer applies to everyone. So in certain court cases, if the judge mandates someone to be 100 yards away, that would be in some of the conditions, and in this matter, it was not. Um, but there is, the case has been filed by our detectives, uh, there is a court case pending on the matter, uh, and we, we will await to see what the judge is, uh, based on the arrest that we made, uh, for failing to register.
Do we have a timeframe on that court case?
Uh, I believe it's 60 days from the arrest, 60 days from the arrest, uh, so we're, we're coming close to the 60, uh, 60-day mark. But we're well aware, uh, of who they are, and again, it's through the due diligence that our detectives have. We've, uh, have specialized training in locating some of these folks, uh, which I won't go into, uh, just to prevent from letting out the secrets. Uh, but we are well aware of, uh, where, I don't want to say 100%, but at least 99% of them reside in.
I think our comment should be that the police department's well aware of who's living there.
That's correct.
And why, and it's under a court situation right now, hopefully it gets to the court and make a decision.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That is correct.
Thank you, chief, appreciate that.
Not a problem.
Mr. Domer? Assignments and...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and members of the public. Um, on the, with the reorganization of the advisory committees, commissions to the city council, um, a lot of things were set. So, um, a lot of the terms, uh, actually expired many, many months ago, and everybody's been kind of holding over for a while. Um, but with the massive change, but more so the switch to the by-district, um, appointment process. So prior, there was an application process, much like there is today, where everybody has to put in an application. And then, at that point, there was some type of interview process, a lot of stuff. With, uh, going to elections by districts, um, what the council switched to was each council member in their district would appoint somebody to one of these commissions or commission committees. And now, that term actually goes with the term of the council. Um, and so that's why pretty much all of these, uh, the major commissions, commission committees were reset. So, yes, there are technically all five members of the Planning Commission, um, all their seats are open. Um, but, uh, all those members can be reappointed. And just like any member who has been serving on the Active Transportation Commission, which doesn't exist anymore, can be appointed, um, if a council member wants to appoint them to the new Active Transportation Infrastructure, which kind of oversees the public works area. So, um, that's why they are listed as vacancies. Um, and again, we've asked all current, uh, commissioners or committee members to reapply, um, or to apply for a different committee or commission, um, if that is their desire to. As far as the Parks and Recs Commission, um, yeah, this is the first time we wanted to be open, uh, and inclusive of a lot of different things regarding our parks, recreational opportunities. We do a lot of cultural events, or we could do more cultural events, so that's why the, uh, cultural, um, events or cultural, I forget the, the correct terminology, initiatives, um, would be brought forward to the Parks and Rec Commission, um, either by outside groups or by individuals. Or just if there's ever in the future, um, you know, when they're looking and staff is talking to them about some of the current events that we do citywide, um, if there's something, we'll take recommendation, advice from the Parks and Rec Commission, and then eventually, that would make its way up to the city council if there needed to be a decision. So, uh, but we didn't want to preclude anything culturally related, understand that there is the Cassie group, and we hope that they work strongly with the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, but we didn't want to, uh, not include anything cultural, uh, at our parks and recreation.
If I can just comment on that real quick, I think the question that was raised was because there's a discrepancy between what is identified as the job, as the committee description on two different, in two different places. And I know that I had another resident ask me about the application form, there's like some sort of a glitch or some sort of, it takes them to an old form. So I think we need to take a look at all of that, and make sure that the language is aligned, that the correct forms are being used, and that everybody's getting the same information. Otherwise, it's going to cause that type of confusion. And I think, um, for clarity's sake, you know, maybe explaining if it's not already explained somewhere, why are there, you know, why are there five vacancies? There's people that look like their terms are not up yet, you know, just, uh, providing a little bit more clarity, so people can figure out what they really want to apply for.
Well, maybe make a dry run, also a dry run on it, staff to dry run to go through it, say if you're going to apply for one of these and see if it, if it's doing that populating on an old screen, or the term, what you see at the first is not seeing at the last, or you're actually applying for it, where it's not continuing on that explanation.
Yeah, and that's all good information, no, because I, I know we've been successful on getting applications, so, um, clearly, it's working, we'll have to look at all the different avenues again. We're trying to make sure that there's multiple different ways to submit an application, so clearly, there's a, a link or something. And then, as far as the website, uh, we'll take a look and change tomorrow.
Right, and I, and I think, um, the resident did send a detailed email, I think, to staff about the discrepancy between the two links and what applications are being pulled up. So I think whatever applications are being submitted, I, I want to be clear that we're asking the people the same questions, because if it's two different application forms, or if there are some, you know, we just want to make sure that everybody's filling out the same thing.
Absolutely. Okay.
Also mention of the Youth and Family, um, committee was prior, the Red Rib, Red Ribbon Committee. Has that committee gone away?
Yeah, no, I'll answer that. So the, with the restructuring, the Youth and Family Action Committee actually falls under the Parks and Recreation Commission. And so, once that body is seated by council, YFAC will be an advisory body to that group. Um, and so, the Parks and Recreation Commission will actually approve the executive board of YFAC. But as, YFAC and its, how it acts and proceeds has been outside of like cities' general funds. Um, basically, we get our funding through donations, so all that process, and, um, we actually have a meeting next Tuesday, so this is a great time to plug that, that if you are interested in participating in that group, um, our next meeting's next Tuesday at 5:00, right in these chambers. Um, and, you know, we hope to continue to have great participation in that.
So I know we're working through the kinks of changing organizational structure, but if YFAC is falling under Parks and Recreation and we're waiting for them to be seated, I can see potentially some of these meeting times not, you know, I mean, it may not be on the same cadence. Because it's a subgroup, so I, I just want to be cognizant of that, too, as we're looking at this, like, how often are these people meeting? Who's on what? Because right now, on YFAC, I'm on both YFAC and, uh, Parks and Rec, which is fine because they flow into each other, but we may have to take a look at that.
Yeah, I know, we already looked at, um, scheduling out when Parks and Recreation would be, and we're making sure that we're going to move our YFAC meetings to either before or after, depending on what ends up making sense. And we're going to move YFAC meetings from meeting monthly, um, to quarterly, so hopefully that, um, also helps free up some time.
Uh, one other comment, uh, Mr. Domer? You said, uh, we all, we move to districts and that, uh, representatives, we will make appointments within the district, but we can make appointments from anybody that, uh, applies. They don't have to particularly be with inside, live inside your district.
Correct, yeah, good clarification, I'm sorry about that, yes, so from within, so you will, as your district number, make appointments. Um, but the person that you appoint, uh, does not necessarily need to live within your district, they can live anywhere within the city. It's always great if it aligns, uh, but for what, what we've seen from past folks and who have served, and also some of those that are coming in, um, they're a little bit weighted heavier towards districts, for whatever reason, so.
Good. Quite a few.
And many of the current planning commissions are from similar districts, so.
Yeah, so.
With that, we'll go to council comments. Mr. Crosby?
No problems, thanks. Uh...
Yeah, we already have.
We did public comments, yes. Um, last week, I represented Laverne at the San Dimas Canyon Golf Committee. I just want to state that, uh, many improvements have happened, um, to the facilities, especially their wedding, um, uh, facilities.
Who works there?
I, there is a person in my family that works there. My, my daughter's currently, uh, actually...
She's lovely, by the way.
It serves food there.
Much better.
But, uh, this, the venue has been updated, um, and, um, so make sure you go out and see that, uh, updated. And why Laverne is part of the, uh, golf course is because there are four holes that are reside in Laverne, and so we, um, oversee them as well. Uh, the National Night Out was a great success, so thank you for all, uh, put on, thank you for police and fire and, um, all of our, um, employees out there, really represent our city very well. Um, and, um, thank goodness it was a little cooler than last year. Uh, and then, um, great job for Parks and Rec for last week's ability dance. Over 200 people attended, their next dance is the Halloween Hop, so thank you very much.
Mr. Johnson?
Well, I would say that, um, the Gold Line should be up and running, um, by the time that we meet again here.
Yes, it will. It's a hard date, it's going to be the, the 19th, so, that's what Meta said.
It'd be before our next meeting.
They might be doing some kind of a, just local celebration at each station, but nothing like we did when the, you know, the, the, basically, the christening of the station. But there'll be festivities and stuff they're working on, and they'll, they'll let Mr. Domer know, but that's what I've been hearing. It'd be fun. How's someone, Lau?
Um, I just wanted to extend my thanks to everybody who contributed to National Night Out, um, it was a great night with the police and, um, everybody else that showed up, and the community was out in full force, probably because, as Mr. Crosby said, it was nicely, uh, cooler this year, um, but it was a good event, so thank you to everyone who came out. Um, I know Cassie was out there, we had Cert out there, we had, um, the wildlife folks and the lady petting the, the stuffed coyote. Um, so it was a, it was an interesting and fun night.
Was that her?
No. So, uh, if you've ever been to a National Night Out, please feel free to come by.
So, uh, if you've never been to a National Night Out, please feel free to come by next time. I also wanted to just, uh, share that ULB also did start their first day of school, and I thought this might be, um, an interesting note for folks. Um, our new students that moved in, uh, to campus residence halls, um, this past weekend come from 25 nations, as well as 31 different U.S. states. Um, it's also one of our largest groups of transfer students in the history of the university. So, um, I think it's gonna be an exciting year for the university, and hopefully y'all come out and see some of our stellar athletes and participate in some of our awesome events. Um, speaking of which, on September 8th, for anyone who golfs, um, ULB is hosting their golf tournament at Villa Verde in San Dimas, and that is a Monday, and so, um, as, uh, council member Johnson indicated before, um, we have a men's soccer, um, tournament or, uh, game on August 20th at 8:00 PM, so under the lights, so, um, if you're available, they'll be playing, uh, that day. Um, and then last but not least, um, there is the very first council forum coming up this Monday, um, at Hillcrest, this next Monday at Hillcrest, so, for any of you that are interested, I think Cash and I will be representing at that one. And so, as always, be kind, uh, be safe out there, new drivers and all that kinda fun stuff.
Thank you. House Murillo, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you all colleagues, council members, staff, thanks for everybody for an amazing, uh, night, for the National Night Out, I thank Laverne Police Department and all those, uh, folks that, uh, made that happen, it was a complete success. Um, another, another great, uh, great time I reiterated again for the Damian High School Band, please get, get what you can to help them out, to get them to represent our city. And last but never least, I, I, we had the mosquito vector control board, I was the acting president, uh, it was a good, a great, it was such a good time that, you know, we can announce we didn't have that many mosquito issues here in Laverne, so yes, fight on, uh, continue to do that. We'll have a great time, you know, it's just a battle with these mosquitoes, man, it's a battle with mosquitoes, yes, man, it's killing me.
Mosquito vector?
Yep, and then in our district, again, I don't, I don't know what to tell you, wildlife is out there, you know, I mean, wildlife is out there, which I gotta go say hi to the family, um, make sure they're okay. Uh, be cognizant, you know, they're out there, so, thanks again, and I look forward for another, another, um, opportunity to come and represent our city.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Cash. Uh, what Mayor Pro Tem Cash was saying, um, if you are in anywhere baseline north, be very careful of the, uh, wild animals. I know that the Simison property, there's not one day that doesn't go by, which is on Golden Hills Road, probably anywhere from 10 to 20 deer that are just grazing, and they're beautiful, but also esperanza in Golden Hills at night, be very, very careful. They do jump the roads, and it's just catastrophic if you hit one or none of that, it's catastrophic of people to hit them because it does a lot of damage, so just beware of that.
It's been a few years, but we had a bear, second.
Wow.
Wow.
Wow, well, you had mountain lions running through people's homes, so, you know, we are, and not only that, with the terrain and everything else, and the, it seems like they're moving closer to us, and, uh, I know our, our neighbor, uh, that lives in, uh, it's LA County, but it's the homes just above, in North Laverne, a bear would tore off the underground, uh, screen, literally ripped it off to get underneath the house, ripped off the fence by their kitchen, the Williams, Jim and John Williams, tore the, the vents off, was getting underneath the house, and so, they, they're there, so, you know, be careful, be careful. Um, I know, and I appreciate all the comments, uh, everything you guys said, kudos and ditto. Um, we wanna also, um, uh, a shout out to our, uh, fire department personnel that are on fire assignments, I know some have returned, I know that we have also some personnel, and I think Joe Rivera, who is a fleet management, I think, is out also, uh, but, I know B.C. Russell, a number of these, uh, uh, annuitants and retirees are just giving some amazing, uh, um, you know, direction to these fires and some of these really horrific fires, and I appreciate our direction from Chief Nig and also our city manager Domer, but we just wanna make sure, and every time I get one from B.C. Russell or, or B.C. Dominic, that they may arrive safely, uh, work safely and return safely, so, uh, please let them know that, chief, that, uh, we're always thinking about them and what they're doing for the wonderful communities that they're serving, and, uh, uh, just the amazing, uh, amount of talent they have to be out there to help these other agencies, so. And also make sure we bill, okay, just bill, 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 okay, thank you, I just throw that out there.
Our money.
I was just gonna say it, but no, we're really tickled to death and we, we just wanna make sure they return safely, and, uh, thank you.
But add note, if they are gone, we are still fully staffed.